Parents, guardians, students, other members, it's great to have a good audience today. We appreciate you all being here.
Call the meeting to order, roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering, present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Seikenbaum?
Present.
Mr. Kazoo?
Present.
And Ms. Wickler?
Present.
All board members present.
Okay, anyone have a public comment they want to talk back for the meeting?
I've got one, depending on who else has...
Well, Mr.?
You go ahead, Senator, please. The teachers are getting vaccinated Friday, so that makes it great.
Thursday.
Oh, it was Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully they won't be sick Friday, but I know some people haven't been vaccinated since the second check.
Right.
My question is, are there any teachers who are not getting vaccinated, who don't want to be vaccinated?
Yes, yes, it was a personal decision. It was...
It is a personal decision, of course, it's not about a personal business as soon. But I guess I would say, fall, we hope, I mean, we hope to see everybody in class. There should be some ability for a parent to say, without knowing who, without knowing whatever, somebody, say, "I don't want my child, for some reason, to be in a classroom with the teacher who hasn't had vaccination." I need that for you to think about...
That's a lot to think about, I'm sure.
But there are, you know, even though kids don't get the vaccine or the virus as much, as adults supposedly, they don't get impacted as much, but some have done. And there are kids who have immune problems that are particularly concerning. So, I would, you know, let the board think about that. And again, I don't think the parents should know who it is, they didn't trigger, you know, if it's a man, I picked man out of my major. If it was a man's teacher, you know, because I should be able to say, "I don't want that." My second question is about school and the fall. Are we doing anything, because the number one thing I hear from all these experts is ventilation. Is there anything we can do to improve the filtration of our ventilation system before the fall, or if not, then, along...
We're, we're good on our schools, because thankfully this district is blessed with great facilities. Our greatest concern is what we're getting ready to address at our middle school, where they still have window units. So our buildings, even this one that we're in tonight, has what we refer to as the air handlers. They exchange the air, filters and all that stuff like that, where they bring in the fresh air and they exchange the air, so it's not just recycled in. But our big concern still is our middle school that we're currently in the process with the state of going to start renovation with the old window units. Yeah. The rest of them are, are, they have the air handlers and everything. Yes, sir.
I think you might want to put the word...
He's watched too much television.
He, he's been watching C-SPAN.
That would be a good place to be at, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if any of the rest of the community has any calls, uh, uh, called, to represent a group of parents in those counties, concerned with what if any plan we had of the same children. And, two more questions. Second part is, are we given special directions against discriminating African-American girls to get signed by that one? Some members of the family go four days a week to the tip.
Of employees?
Of employees, too.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to address that. Yes, some employees, when we met with the principal, we was agreeing to return back to person. We have a lot of employees that have no other childcare options. Not everybody's taking advantage of that and sending their child. I'll use this example of one. Kobe Lee sits on the couch in my office, three days in a week, and he's in school two days a week. But some of our employees, some of our cooks, some of our instructional assistants, certainly some of our teachers, they did not have, due to family members that are sent, or just didn't have any other family to keep their child, and their child needs company so we could have a place for them to open up in school. The other groups that right now, that's been encouraged by the state, that are coming or starting to come four days a week, are our DL students, our students that are English language learners, because their, English is their, is not their native language, and then our, some of our special education students, that need the extra help and the assistance, especially if they're just in the higher levels. They, those, most students are working in two, four days a week. When we had a conversation with the principals, it was contention to find, we would not, currently open a car or room. Of course, right now, the state of the United States still gives us six, six feet, that's what they, they put out a new manual just today, it's hundreds of pages, I printed off, and they still want that six feet in the classroom. Well, I am asking the question, there are some schools that are, I'm going now, Mr. Murray, to the opening school part of, in the, at the beginning of this, we were told by the Department of Public Health and K E, they did not want the Plexiglas shield, they didn't want any of that stuff in the classroom, because they felt like it wasn't effective. Some of my superintendencies, and we've got a superintendent meeting tomorrow, have started, are going to start utilizing some of those classroom shields. So, you know, I'm sitting here at my desk, and I've got one of those classroom things. I'm going to ask, I don't know if they're just going off on their own, but tomorrow we've got a superintendent meeting, and I'm going to ask if that's one thing that now that they have loosened up on, that they feel like is beneficial, so we can have additional students in the classroom beyond just the hybrid model of bringing in the A through L, L through Z. So that would be something that would help. I think, going back to what Mr. Onion had asked earlier about the ventilation of the schools, again, that's not really the concern for us, except at the middle school. They have the window units, so you don't have that return, exchange of air. In the past, when we first started back in the fall, and taking person, our students at the elementary level, you can ask the elementary principals, it did not even look like it was a traditional full classroom. I mean, students were just talking to that. So right now, our current guidance, and CDC does say, you know, get schools back open, but the caveat of that is doing it within proper social distancing. And so that's, that's kind of the, we need some relief on that, or some additional guidance on that, before I can feel most comfortable. But as time goes on, and I say time, hopefully just weeks, I want additional students, more students in, and, you know, I attempt, I, I would hope that by the end of the year, we can have anybody who wanted to, to be back in school. And we're certainly planning, Ms. Barrett, Ms. Rector, many others, are working on our after-school program and their summer school program, which I definitely feel like is really going to be good. But I'm going to answer your questions, Mr. Murray.
Uh, to pick one of those, it's third question, it ain't mine.
Okay. But it, it, listen, I can fully understand, and I'll address this to, to those in the audience, I can fully understand, I've got a brother-in-law that works at, at Dr. Snyder's, and, you know, and many other parents are out there as well, and I understand the childcare issues of not being in school, and who's going to keep the children, back and forth. We were also hangtied with a lot of faculty and staff that said, we were, you know, we want to get back to school, I don't know what I'm going to do with my child. I don't have family here, or my, you know, my in-laws are sick, or all those types of situations. And at the very beginning, it did expire December 31st, but under the Family First Prodigy Act, if, we had made some revisions for employees, or just paying them to be off, if, if, because we were large enough organizations, we fell underneath that, that expired December. But we, there's so many things that, that doesn't have a good answer for, you know, it's easy to upset, it's easy to understand, I, I get all those questions, and I get, that's a very valid question that that constituent called you with.
Miss Antetokounmpo, is there almost a possibility to get at this point?
Subs are very difficult, some people just elect not to sub, just because they're concerned. And we have, that last round that I put out, email, and I'm on the radio, requesting people to apply for subs, we did have some post-identity process, and are happy to work, so we're really put pleased with that, but we are very long on the subs right now, I have to move.
You know, the, 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 the answer?
No, no, we're strong.
I know, regardless of what steps you make, you ain't losing that.
No, sir.
And I think we all realize that, and hopefully everybody knows that, it's just, I mean, just hoping just to go back to the end, bring a few children, and hopefully that's, that's more work.
I don't know how these that are going, I still don't know how they're doing it. How are they keeping the six feet?
Um, I don't think they are.
Are they wearing that?
They can't be, no, there's no way. You can't have, I mean, some of our classrooms are in a danger right now on a hybrid schedule. So, that's on a hybrid schedule.
Just like a kindergarten class has, what, six to a table usually, and six feet hard, you can't have that many in a classroom, in a small classroom. So, it's, once we get the vaccine going, and, hopeful best. Okay, anyone else? Any other comment? Any adoption of the agenda?
Ms. Wickler, I don't have anything to add or take away from the, the agenda, so I recommend the agenda, if there are no arrangements remaining, I recommend the board members, I recommend the agenda to approve this presented.
I make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll sign it.
Hey, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seikenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickler?
Yes.
STEM Challenge Contest Recognition.
This is great, and I'm just so pleased to have some of the parents and guardians and students here with us tonight. Ms. Marcy, at this time, if you come up to the stage, and Ms. KJ, I think you're, you're sure, who are you going to recognize first? Marcy?
I can tell, in whatever order. Are the certificates accepted?
They are, I've got them right here. Talk about the project, it's one of the most...
Thanks, Randy, I just want to thank you all for... Welcome me out, welcome me out to share this with you. In case you don't know what STEM means, it's a project that combines science, technology, engineering, and math. And this challenge, the students had to pretend that they were in the Arctic, and it had gotten dark on them, and they were stuck, so they had to go with Fortis for the night.
And this was before, or recently, whether?
Yes. If I had planned this recently, it would have really been a real-life experiment. So they had to create an igloo that could shelter themselves. And the materials they had, that they could use, were sixty mini marshmallows. Those were the blocks of ice, and they could use twenty-five toothpicks. Now, they did not have to use all of the supplies, so that's where the engineering comes in. And I wish I had brought some photos to show you, but I didn't. So anyway, they did a great job, we picked two winners per grade level at each school. And I really, really enjoyed getting to see the creation and the time put in with this. So, we have got some certificates for you.
Hey, parents, I'm just telling you all, you can watch this on YouTube, you're dropping it up, the roll count down, if you want to do it, it's, start rolling it down, and it's not possible, that's a crisis, and you're...
All right, we've got all the ready.
Abby L. Edwards.
I stand up.
Kate Taskin.
Sarah Holsten.
Y'all can't see my smile, but it's a big one, I'm so proud of these kids. Colton Whitaker.
Go to spring, you want my green?
Destiny Toffley. Valinda Fuentes. Aiden Collins. Alexis Nelson. Grayson Moran. Carly Shear.
And thanks to all of the schools.
Ben Bell. Bristol Chisholm. Lillian Davis, now Lillian could be with us today. Aiden Thomas, and he also could be here today. Ajay Thompson. Stella Thorpe.
Okay, Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition.
Thank the board for allowing us to recognize the employee of the month every month. And this month, for February, our employee of the month is Ms. Rhonda Kimbler, so if you'll go ahead and head up this way as I start talking about her. Ms. Kimbler has been teaching for twenty-seven years, if you count the time that she was an assistant teacher in Jamestown, that's where she started out, and then she was at Union Chapel, where she taught about every grade. She had first grade, third, fourth, she taught some science, some writing, and then she's been with us at Russell County Middle School since being moved from Union Chapel. She has a degree from Lindsay Wilson College in Business, and also from Western Kentucky University in Elementary Education, reading, writing specialist, and has her principal certificate. What she likes most about teaching is that she feels she's giving something back, and she's contributing to the future. She enjoys watching movies and eating popcorn with her son, and on top of teaching, she's also a waitress at the Lake Cumberland State Park. So, I mean, she is putting in so much time into service jobs, very good, yes, she's, she's service, you know, that's, that's how you sum up Ms. Kimbler, in one word, is service, because that's what she's always trying to do. One of her favorite quotes is, "Some people wait their whole lives to meet their inspiration. I raised mine," is what she said. So, that just also speaks multitudes to her.
I don't really have the words to say in regards to myself, but I would like to thank KDA and RCA for allowing us to do this, and to recognize a teacher each time, because it does mean a lot, it really does. And so with that, I would like to recognize some of the teachers that, over the years, impacted my life in such a drastic and marvelous way. The first that I'd like to recognize is Ms. Irene Loyd. I had Ms. Irene in fourth grade, back then you could cut children's hair when they needed it. I've watched her cut many a boy's hair right in front of the classroom, and they'd ask her, she'd give him a haircut, and she would. She saw something in me that I would have never seen had it not been for her. And so, I appreciate this Irene very, very much. The next one that I'd like to recognize tonight is Ms. Nadine Molly. And I had her in high school during a time when I needed guidance, as we all do in high school, and Ms. Nadine, every day would read us a story after lunch, and it always was something of spiritual and faith nature. And so she was able to introduce and share her faith and her love of God in a way that, you know, it didn't, it didn't hinder, it didn't go against anybody, it was just a showing of love through those stories. And so I appreciated all the stories and faith that she, she demonstrated back there. Another one was Ms. Eliza Garner. I never had Ms. Eliza as a teacher, but when I first started teaching in first grade, she was placed in my classroom. And I'll be honest, she intimidated me just a little bit, because Ms. Eliza had taught for over twice as many years as I did a lot. So I knew she knew and would know if I messed up. And I knew with it being my first year, I was going to mess up. And I learned more though from Ms. Eliza about reading, and about loving kids, and what to do when a kid was naked, and I guess I did, with anybody. So she was a great inspiration to me that first year. And the last one I wanted to recognize tonight is Ms. Cindy Roberts. Ms. Cindy, I started out being an assistant in her classroom at Jamestown, and in that classroom, I saw how to teach with patience, and how to teach with calmness. And then later, I got to teach with Ms. Cindy, and then after that, she was my principal. And it was there that, again, for anybody that knows Ms. Cindy, knows the calming nature of her heart, and the peace that she can bring just by being in her presence. So, with that being said, I accept this tonight on behalf of all the teachers, and on behalf of those that inspired me, saw something in me, and taught me a lot more than any college class ever did. So I appreciate them, and I encourage all of you to reach out to some of those teachers that you've had in your past, and let them know how much they mean to you, because it truly will make their day in here. Thank you all.
Very well said.
So even as we're supposed to honor her, she took time to honor others, so again, that just speaks to her. We also have a check we'd like to get. The board was also gracious enough to allow me to speak very quickly about Vee Across America, which is March 2nd. So you all will be getting an email, Ms. Carol Dalek has sent it to you, I know you don't have access to it right now, but you'll have the... but you'll have the website. It is still in progress, but that way you can go ahead and check it out. If any of you all would like to add or read aloud, that'd be great. I already have Ms. Brenda Higginbotham's and Mr. Ford's, but anybody else that would like to be added with the community leaders. So what we're doing is, Read Across America has to be virtual this year. We can't quite do the big extravaganza we did last year. However, we do hope to put something together in the fall if we can have a few less restrictions. So we have teamed up again with Russell County Public Library, and RCA is providing boxes, activity boxes, that'll be passed out to two grade levels, 2 through 7 and 7 through 12. The 7 through 12 is a STEM activity. So you can pick those up for free in the library until we run out of boxes, and the kids will be able to put that together. We're also providing a virtual site. It's a Google site. Flyers will be sent out to the elementary schools later this week and on Monday, so we make sure we hit the Navy and the Scarlet groups. And these will have games, different activities, virtual libraries, which will include different seasons of Read Alouds of other people, holidays, different content areas, math books, science books, books that are read in Spanish, books for mental wellness. There's also community Read Alouds, so the kids can actually hear from people they know and they see out in the community. Both mayors have submitted videos. Our state representative, Josh Branscombe, our state senator, Max Wise, have sent in videos, some board members, Mr. Ford, our elementary school principals have graciously made videos so the kids can see their elementary school principals reading to them there, and the district attorney. So that's just a little snippet. I hope that you all enjoy the Google site when it comes out, and it will be there for future. So it's not something that's just this year. We'll be able to continue to build on it. And we will have a few free books that will also be given out March 2nd, and we'll have more of those that we're gonna do in the fall also. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Mark. You're on the work, and I'm the worker at the heart in coordinating that, putting that all together. She does a great job.
I'd like to say thank you to the teachers and the students and parents, you know, these kids that have put out this extra effort and their creativity. It just blows my mind, because I think I got left out on creativity came in. But it's really nice to see, and then the teachers that work with them. It's just really rewarding. Okay, next is the consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, paying the bills for the construction fund report, school activity fund report, financial report, and the treasurer's monthly report for January. I want to present that to Ms. Carnes. Russell County Board of Education Treasurer's Monthly Report, month of January 2021. Balance on hand at the end of the month is $6,125,240.40. Total of all receipts for the month, $4,265,908.45. Total of all receipts and beginning balance, $10,391,108.85. Disbursements, $3,000... $3,000, sorry, $229,73.83. Balance at the close of the month, the cash and bank, $7,162,035.2. Individual fund balances, general fund, Fund One, $6,801,038.33. Special projects, Fund Two, $982,108.97. District activity, Fund One, $3,784.90. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $135,392, even. FSPK building, Fund Three Twenty, $466,563.32. Construction, Fund Three Sixty, negative $1,242,422.29. Dead service, Fund Four Hundred, zero. Food service, Fund Fifty One, $11,942.90. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,627.70. Total cash and bank of all funds, $7,162,035.2. And I'll note again, on the construction fund, we have over $8 million that's been... Right at $8 million that's been submitted for review by mistake. We've just not got back about that. So again, we spend all of our money first on the bond revenues for the new building project, then they start kicking in that $5.7 billion. So they're just going through the review process of all of our expenditures right now. If there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Geo-Techical Engineering Services, Russell County Middle School renovation, addition, and paving project.
Okay, so at the last previous meeting, and they've already started the work on the survey that's required and all that entails for that, now we have to do the Geo-Tech, Technical Engineering for the Russell County Middle School renovation and addition, and then the campus paving project. Sherman Carter Barnhart, our architect and record, on their behalf, they secured three proposals. This is all been in your board packet for Geo-Techical. This will also include the special inspections, the quality assurance and quality control services for Russell County Middle School and the asphalt replacement project. LE grad for the Geo-Tech part, you all can see this on your form, is $6,280. American Engineers was $12,605. SME was $7,250. On the special inspections and the quality control and the quality assurances, it's kind of went a lot of variance between one of them. LE grad came in at $21,960. American Engineers was $25,200. And SME was $50,000. So you see your totals on the right-hand column that I had up there. LE grad total, which is encompassing both the special inspections, the quality control, the quality assurances, and the Geo-Tech, was $28,240. American Engineers was $37,805. And SME was $57,250. American Engineers was the second highest... or second lowest bid, having a look at it. They worked on our campuses for a number of years, most recently done work at the ATC building that we've done. They did all the core drilling, the compression, all of that, with that foundation and everything. Their proposal here is about $10,000 higher than LE grad. I talked to Kevin Cheek, our architect. Of course, he works with all these different companies, and he noted that American Engineers certainly... They're familiar with our campuses, they're familiar with our territory, land around here and all that work. But he and I both agree, for $10,000 difference, I am very interested in exploring and going with LE grad, because that's $10,000. And I trust that our architectural and construction management firm would stay on top of them if any issues were developed. You saw their whole... They have all the same credentials as everyone else. You saw their whole proposal with... in connection with American Engineers and SME. And I know that's $10,000, it's $10,000. So I do, in this case, recommend the low bid with LE grad. And they will take care of the work, barring any unforeseen circumstances. They'll do the core drilling that's required for foundation, not only for the middle school additions, but in addition to the paving project throughout, the compression and everything. They'll be with us then throughout the project. So Kevin's worked with them in the past, and so I'm confident that, like I said, $10,000, I recommend going with LE grad for $28,240 for the total price. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you all have. We have to have this going to get started on the rest of the project. They can't plant the blacktop until they do the core drills and all that stuff like that. And it's a requirement of Kentucky Department of Education. Anyway, they reject it if we didn't have the Geo-Tech and everything in there.
Yes, sir.
Just what is it? Geo-Tech?
Yeah, they will drill down and take core samples for the foundations of the building. So we're not allowed to build unless we have the foundation evaluated in case there's any open voids or spots or anything like that. They'll addition to doing those. And then when they do, not only for the addition part, of course, we're looking at how you do a geothermal for electrical, so the fields will be encompassed in part of that. And then throughout this whole campus parking lot, they'll be working on that part. But then as they build and do the foundation, so... It's school stuff that's so heavily regulated. You know, for instance, if we're gonna build this building over here, they contact that dirt, and then they test it and see if it had the moisture content, and all those things that are detailed with all that. It's kind of neat, because these companies employ not only the engineers, but they have the archaeologists and all those different folks that... No, geologists, I'm sorry, not archaeologists. But they have the geologist and everything that's included in that. It all goes back to stability and the foundations and everything. But it's not... I mean, it's required. They even reject it without us doing those types of things. And then they'll be with them throughout the project as well.
Well, I was under the assumption, we was talking about blacktop. I don't know what's holding on, and I'm gonna have to do an involvement with that. I have no bad way of blacktop, I didn't have to have nothing done, I get it.
No, but it's a public job, and with buses running over it and the machinery and the weight and things like that. And not only for the blacktop, but for the addition of the building as well. On page... Let me see, I had it marked in one of these kind of highlights of the work. I won't probably turn to it right now. They have the project information highlighted out, and then on top. And really, a part of this, too, is to perform that you don't get into and then come up with surprises. If your corner of the building starts sinking, you know, after the building's done, those types of things, and foundations start cracking, I won't be able to turn to the exact picture, I know we had it highlighted, but all their work with all their credentials and everything for each of the companies is on there. And their fees are based on the KDE schedule. They don't just always pull something out of the air, except they're basing their quality control inspection on what they perceive the project might entail, but the base price of the Geo-Tech. Everything from the drain line, sanitary, you're involved in every bit of it.
I never... I just... I've never heard of them, like, I mean... They have a deal we gotta go, even though sometimes they don't make sense.
A project with the State Department and you and I building the houses. We better be glad we don't have them to over it.
You know, all building projects have to have the core drilling and so much of a city building on.
You know, all the four of them, I think it does, it ain't gonna change that, no.
Well, it depends on if they have to shore it up. For instance, if they got on some of the places of the blacktop and it was deteriorated beneath, or... He and I have sat down and talked, not this gentleman, but the... One of the other guys that works with them. You know, they may take a soil sample and find out there's some oil ex amount of feet down that they have to address. They can undercut it, bring in heavy rock, compress it, and shore it back up. And part of this is insurance, because they don't want... You know, Gannys wants to see this, because they don't wanna come in and do our parking lot and then be hollering for six months from now and say there's a big crack and a big hole out here. You know, a part of that helps with everybody on the whole project. Yeah, sinkhole. It's expensive, which is where it is. But with state rates and everything, it's... That's why I'm recommending that we go with the cheapest one. And I don't have... And I say cheapest one, I don't have an issue with their quality. I've just been always very pleased with American Engineers. But they've done a lot of projects here in Russell County, and they're familiar with this.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Okay, next is approval of Superintendent Ford's contract, July the 1st, 2021 to June the 30th, 2025. And we met with Jeff Huber virtually, and Mr. Ford decided he refused to take any... Any addition to his salary that he has now. And the only thing he asked for was, what would you call it? I have his contract for his eyes and policy. So that's the only way it's changing, other than the date.
And the... This building contract.
Yeah. Well, we had that already.
Scottish never taken advantage of.
Just look at all the list of all the salaries of the surrounding units. I was just amazed how low I received this. But I mean, I appreciate you not wanting a raise.
Well, I can tell you...
He just not getting a raise. I would hate...
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Ford. As I told Ms. Whitaker, we've not given employees a raise for a few years, and I hope we can very soon. This contract, which is very common in superintendence contracts, it does say that we give employees 1% raise, and that would be on mine as well. And that's a very common thing. But I didn't think it was the time with COVID and financial and everything else going on that employees not having a raise. I didn't think it was the proper time for that. And I appreciate you all. I love Russell County Schools, and I certainly know all the employees, and blessed to be here. You know, just seeing the kids come up here this evening, and our principals are gonna speak at the end. The good stuff that happens is in spite of me. It's... We've got a fabulous... We've got a fabulous board. I'll say that for you, I vote on my contract, but we do. And I'm a person of that spot. And we've got fabulous community support. We've got wonderful parent guardian support. And we've got awesome faculty and staff in the district. I told the principals today, I actually had to get them together twice on Microsoft Teams meeting, as Will's brainstorming what to do with the water issue out here tomorrow in middle school and high school. I just thanked them, you know, I can throw anything at them, they just roll with the punches. And that goes for every one of our faculty and staff. And that's no more true than this year, than what we've had to do. So I appreciate you all, and Ms. Huber, Mr. Huber, and Ms. Whitaker working with them on their contract.
Well, it's... I've never turned down a raise offer to me. Yeah. Yeah. I do think his reasoning is true to form, but teachers and I haven't raised for a number of years, and neither has he. So we hope for better in the future. We can get all this silliness we've had since last March out of way, and we can take off like we normally do. But you all seen it comprehensively, I mean, proposed.
Do you need a motion for it, to approve it, or on time?
Yes.
I'm gonna motion and we approve the contract, it's ready.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Before I vote, I'm gonna make a statement. I'm just gonna do this, to talk to men who want my raise. And I go ahead and...
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate the vote of confidence. Humble to be in this position, and it's great to lead your whole life in Russell County Schools and then graduate from Russell County High School and be blessed to be superintendent of Russell County Schools. So thank you all for the continued opportunity. So thank you all for the continued opportunity.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, tentative district staffing and S B D M allocation policy.
Okay, so by March first, we always have to give the site based councils through the principals, the tentative district staffing and S B D M allocation policy. What we're, we do not have seat, we don't even have a seat forecast yet from the legislature because they were delayed because of the winter storm. So we don't know what the budget's going for, hold for the seat base for our students. At this time, as we've done the past previous two or three years, I'm asking that the students be funded at the minimum, that each council receive a hundred dollars per student for their S B D M allocation. And then we have every intention, actually, Ms. Carson and I, when we met the other day going over this, with the flexibility of the stimulus money for the instructional resources part, we could actually supplement that with that. But I have full intention that we will come back to you all later, a few board members for a few board meetings later, and and we can adjust that as we have in the past. But for right now, I do recommend that it's a hundred and the tentative school staff allocation to be approved is presented. There's no change on the on the staff allocation. Of course, we do that with the state ratio of the number of students, for instance, kindergarten is twenty four to one, one to three is twenty four to one, grade four is twenty eight to one, grade five through six is twenty nine to one, grade seven through twelve is twenty five to one with that, can't go over that thirty one one ratio. You note the special education kindergarten preschool ratios with their allocations. Of course, kindergarten preschool have to have instructional assistants. Our alternative school again is two teachers and instructional assistant. We have not filled those positions this year because of why our homebound teacher has been assisting in those capacities, so we had some retirements out of that, out of the alternative school, and they that those positions have stayed vacant for this for this school year. We're looking at getting them hired because we'll be back in school, even down to the number of custodians stays the same. Your teachers allocations on the on the next pages, you'll see from March of fiscal year twenty one compared to March of fiscal year twenty two and the comparison of what that would look like. And we will come back with a worksheet for every school, then we'll come back in May with the with the allocations for the for the next school year for the principals and site based councils. You not seen anything really different there than what you've seen at previous years?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, it's tentative, but we do need a, we do need a motion.
Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the tentative school staffing and revenue allocations for twenty one, twenty two, twenty year.
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Sengabaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickler?
Contracts memorandum of agreements approval.
Okay, we have the Chemistville University Student Teacher Agreement and Green River Regional Educational Cooperative with a pride grant of this Chemistville University Teacher Agreement is something very familiar, you're obviously those a lot, which allows us to have student teachers from Council University and other students that will want to get observation hours and things like that. This next pride grant I would like to discuss with you, preventing, reducing, responding to those hurt by violence, increasing protective factors and developing strategies and support through education. This is through GRAC and they've invited us, Russell County Schools and and Aderica schools to be part of this grant. It is being submitted after I need I need Gerald's approval to come on you and then the our Green River Educational Cooperative will submit that. You've seen those different highlights, the Green River will serve as the fiscal agent, the participant, what we are participating is Russell County Schools. Looking, this also continues a lot of the work we're currently doing with BACS, with adverse childhood experiences and trauma form care. In addition to, we would get another mental health therapist paid for through this grant, which I'm really, really excited. And Sheriff Polston has signed the other copy and he is their partnering law enforcement agency and will collaborate with us, district staff, participating local community team members, restored justice initiatives, district and staff on sensitive issues and count of our students outside of school building, all those things like that. So this, we will not know till fall, October one, twenty twenty one, if it's awarded and expected to go through September of twenty twenty four. So we're looking at that timeframe that they would be paying an additional mental health therapist to work with their students and our faculty and staff in addition to further training for our our school employees. So really excited about the opportunity. We don't know that we will get it for certain, but we don't know, we certainly won't get it if we don't try. So I appreciate the co-op, invited us to participate with the Aderica schools and just need Gerald's approval on the contracts.
Who did you say would be administered, or?
Green River, Green River Educational Cooperative, yeah, that we belong to, what we refer to as GRAC.
I looked at that and said, you know, pride, I thought environmental.
Yeah.
But it's entirely different. It's really the facts that you put out forward about it.
It's a totally.
Encouraging, yeah.
It is.
So we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the contract, the memorandum of improvement.
I'll say.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Sengabaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickler?
Revision policy zero eight point one three two, gifted talented students, the first reading.
Russell County Board of Education Policy zero eight point one three two has had three revisions that our Gifted Talent Department had requested based upon their latest training and guidance from the Kentucky Department of Education. So this is just a first reading and no action is required, which you can see the highlighting. It's literally mostly just some change of terminology on page one, on page two of the selection, the criteria committee, one part is is taken out and then the procedural safeguards and revisions is no good. But this is just a first reading, requiring no more action this this evening. Also want to note again, I think I mentioned it last month, but the foundation, the Wicker Quinn Foundation that Ms. Wickler's son and daughter-in-law started, they have also now been recognized by CAGE and a really nice, the Kentucky Association of Gifted Education and a really nice award ceremony was held virtually. Just appreciate them getting some additional recognition for what they're doing, impacting our gifted talent and students here in Russell County schools. And also, you know, one kind, one good thing leads to another, and so Ms. Hannah England called me the other day, really excited, and Dr. Roberts, Julie Roberts from over the Gifted Talent Program at Western Kentucky University has invited Russell County to participate in a pilot project with Southern American Gifted Talented Students. So names kind of getting out there, some good stuff happening with their Gifted Talent Program, and I know a lot of that is from the financial resources that that Wicker Quinn Foundation is providing to us. Ms. Sookie and Ms. Hannah are doing an excellent job with the with their program, doing some really neat stuff, even in the midst of pandemic. I know the sixth grade had a virtual field trip with a detective from Forest Theater after Lincoln was shot, and he kind of worked through the situation and talked to him and it was really, really neat. So it was kind of adapting and adapting and moving on. So unless I'm mistaken, I will share the reports video with you as well. That does not require any action tonight.
Did they come up here and not know that play tonight?
Uh, no, coach was in it, but I didn't keep listening to it, but it was really neat. Yeah, that was a deadly mistake.
That was, projects like that are just so reliable that it helps them use their mind and work with other students also. That's good. Review of procedures.
So we have been working with Kentucky School Board Association, you all heard this Phil now, for over a year on revising our procedures. Procedures are what the district is charged with implementing the policy that you all have have passed. So procedures have to be reviewed by the board, but there is not, there's no action, there's no approval by the board, as it's implementing the policy that you all already passed, it's how we're going to implement that policy. So a few days ago, I know you all got these early, because there might just been two or three pages. Is your planner still working on it?
I used to hold sign eight.
There's a lot of pages for you all in the audience. So that was this most recent round of procedures and lots of review for the board members. So they had that for a few days to look over, but it's it's a lot. And Ms. Dameron has worked tirelessly on that and we're we're getting very close to the end. Thirty something now, Ms. Dameron, is that, I think, what we got left?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. Twenty eight procedures we still got to, we'll we'll get into something and then we've got this more research and get into it, but I I appreciate you all because I know that's timely, going through all the board packing and stuff, but then when we throw all that other stuff to it, I know we may add students.
I read a part of it and then I decided I'd call Cindy if I didn't know anything else. She'd tell me where to find it.
They will be online, their policies, so. That was just for you all to review.
We've got the copy too. Okay, Title One School-wide program presentation updates.
So right now, we can turn this over to this time to Red Rose, and then we also have principals or school representatives here with us too.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for those in attendance tonight. This portion of our meeting is allocated for our annual review of our Title One School I programs, were required by the federal government to review these programs that we utilize in our schools every year. And normally, we do a big shebang with that and invite kids and parents to help present and.
And even have food.
And even have food. But due to our COVID restrictions, we had to really downsize this presentation tonight. And we we did want to hear from each of our schools so that you can kind of get an update on the curriculum and different aspects of their school-wide programs. But before each of those come up and present, I just wanted to give you a little update on our recent Title One survey. That was out for approximately ten days and we are required every year to send out a survey and get some feedback from our stakeholders about our Title One School-wide programs. So I'll give you a little bit of info about that. Before I get to some of the data, just a review of what Title One does, it's the largest federal education program that we have in our country, and its main purpose is just to make sure that all children have an opportunity to receive a high-quality education. And mostly Title One is geared toward the disadvantaged children who would not otherwise have an opportunity to receive an equitable education. So I feel like in Russell County, we do a really good job in targeting those kids and all of our staff. It's really good to to make that extra effort of what's expected out of the Title One School I program. Some advantages of Title One for us significantly is smaller class sizes. We're able in Russell County to provide an additional twenty-three to twenty-five teachers every year based on our our funding from Title One. So you can imagine if we took out that number of teachers in our school system, what it would do to our class sizes. So so for us, that's that's a big plus for us and for our kids, you know, to benefit from those smaller class sizes. It also provides anywhere from eight to ten additional intervention staff members. So that this year, these principals will attest to that, we're really going to need that intervention staff, and they've already been utilized through our virtual programs that we've been doing. And I know we're going to continue needing that support in the coming year as well. So so we're taking that into consideration as we plan for next year's Title One programs also. So just the number of individuals that it increases in our schools is significant for us. It also provides professional learning for our teachers. The state cut our professional learning budget a couple of years ago and we had several dollars allocated from the state, so that Title One does kick up the slack for all of our our training and and teacher expertise that that we need and ensure that our teachers get every year. Title One also pays for our diagnostic assessments, various technology that we need, and it gives parents an opportunity to give feedback and to have a say in curriculum matters and things that their kids are exposed to within our schools. A little bit of update on our survey. Most people who completed the survey indicated that Title One was beneficial because it offered kids an opportunity to receive R T I, response to intervention, which gives targeted intervention for kids who are falling behind or need one-on-one assistance to master concepts. So that's that was well noted in our survey that Title One was very beneficial for that. Sixty-seven percent of respondents indicated that life and career skills should be supplemented into the academic core curriculum. So I thought that was very interesting and that was noted kind of throughout the survey, that people were really interested in making sure that our kids were ready to to have career skills when they graduate from high school here. Forty-six percent of respondents said that English Language Arts was our most necessary core curriculum. So I thought that was interesting as well. Sixty-eight percent would like to be notified by email concerning activities at the school, and Mr. Ford and I talked about that, and and there were several comments about not only posting information on the Google classroom in the stream that we're used to, but also making sure that parents are notified in another way because sometimes it gets lost in the stream on the virtual pages and they sometimes miss announcements. So I just wanted to pass that along to principals to kind of share that with your staff too to make sure that they are notifying parents of different things through another means other than just the Google classroom signs. And that was mentioned more than once in the survey as well. This was interesting. Seventy-four percent of respondents responded favorably to virtual learning, and I say surprising in that we don't always hear about the positives that we've had because we've been forced to go virtually. It's, we a lot of times focus on what what they're missing or or the difficulties that we're having with it, but there's another side of that too, and and we have had some favorable activities that have gone along with the virtual learning. So seventy-four percent of parents who responded to this survey felt that their kids were able to do the assignments and were able to stay caught up. Now, certainly, we have a percentage of kids who are falling behind, and we we recognize that and we are we're intent upon providing interventions in the coming months of the year for that as well. And there were individual comments that did reference a concern for loss of learning during the virtual instruction, and you'll find that nationwide, that that has been a concern across the whole country. So obviously, it would be in low-income areas in states like Kentucky. Just a few more comments here, and then I'll turn it over to the principals to share with you what they're doing at their schools. If we have to continue virtual learning, and you know, we we know that we have a plan, we're going to get back in school and and hopefully we'll be able to do that, but if virtual learning continues, parents requested that there be more interactions with with students, not just live portion, but if they could just do some pop-ins and check-ins, some some personal messaging, have a little bit more of that. Our teachers are doing a fabulous job. This is very difficult, especially since we've gone this hybrid and they're having to manage a virtual classroom plus a live classroom, it's tremendous. It's a it's a great responsibility. But these are just some some comments ever made, and I wanted to share with everybody on that. More regular communication about progress, lack of progress, and again, it was noted about another means of communication such as email about activities or concerns that they have. More access to interventions, and I've mentioned that as one of our focus areas for the coming year, is to continue with our R T I interventionists. This was interesting, too, additional books and print materials to be sent home. All of the kids are having to do virtual things and it's like they don't have a tangible product in their hand, don't have a textbook, so to speak, all the time, but just more access to the printed material. And if there's more difficult material or content being covered, lengthier explanations or opportunities for small group or one-on-one assistance with that as well. And lastly, if you would like, there's a Goldenrod copy that was laying on the table out there for you to provide feedback to any of our school-wide programs, and we'll be glad to address that and and give that to the to the correct school if it's school-related. So if you want to drop that in the basket. So if you want to drop that in the basket on your way out, we'll gladly take your feedback and your comments. And do you all have any questions for me before I turn it over to our principals or representatives that they've sent tonight?
Without it?
Thank you. I know. I know. It's just, I don't know what we'd do without it. And it's just significant. I don't know if people really realize how much that it does impact on learning for our kids. Okay, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Good evening. I think we have five minutes, so I'm going to talk really fast. She's given us several things that we need to share with you. We, yes, we've had homework, Ms. Brande. I know you're happy with that. We try to use Title One funds. We do use Title One funds to help every student, and the core of that is communication with parents. And so there are lots of different ways that teachers communicate with parents and that we in the office communicate with parents. We have the School Messenger Call System that we utilize. We have a PBIS Rewards System at Jamestown that we use that has a messaging component. We use Remind Dojo. We email with parents. We have a PTO Facebook page that information goes on in case people want to look at it that way. Obviously, we have telephones. Some of the teachers are very generous with their cell phone numbers, and people text them at all hours. We used to do. We actually had people in the building and we would send things on with kids. We've always done a monthly calendar of events and those kinds of things also. But we haven't done as much of that this year because everything is virtual. So we do our very best to keep in contact with parents to the extent that they will participate in that. Secondly, then, when you think about using Title One funds, you have to think about curriculum and what that feels like and what you do with that money in terms of how to deliver that curriculum successfully to students. We have monthly PLCs where we sit down typically, sit down with each grade level, and we talk about student progress, and we benchmark and think about where each student is and what that person might need to move forward. And so we make plans based on that. We also have PLCs for subject areas a couple of times a year so that all the math people sit down together and all the, you know, the science people and all the reading people sit down together, and they talk about, if I'm teaching first grade, here's what I really need you to teach them in kindergarten, so that I'm ready to start rolling in first grade, and here's what they need in second grade. And so we share information like that and try to keep that going. We have RTI groups that are going to be taking off here when we start back tomorrow, third through fifth grade, and then some RTI personnel that this money is graciously provided to help with some of the smaller ones, just to grasp that reading and math, those basic number sense kind of concepts. And then the Artful Reading Program, we're still using that, and that kind of connects curriculum all the way across. So all of those things are good. When you think about communicating with parents and providing that strong curriculum, the next thing that comes to your mind is what do you do for students that are at risk when you realize that they're not where they should be or when they're falling behind? And so we have several programs in place for that as well. Again, we benchmark to see where everybody is, and if somebody is behind, we provide RTI. There are all kinds of different models of that that are going on. Teachers have online appointments right now virtually with students, and Ms. Tanya said that was something in the survey that people had asked for, and our teachers are trying to do that. You know, if you'll stay on with me after the live instruction, I'll help you catch up, and we'll do this, this, and this. And I'm here all day long. Just come back and see me if you need something or if you have a question. And so we try to do that. The after-school program is targeted directly to reading and math, and you know, by statute, we have to give more of our attention to reading and math, a little bit more of our time and attention to that than some of the other subjects. And so we're targeting reading and math for after-school, and those are specifically at-risk students that we're concerned about based on the benchmarks and based on the work that's been submitted over this year. We were able to, with this Title One money, provide some assistance in first grade this year, which is phenomenal because, as we all know, we stopped coming to school in person in March of last year, this past year, and kindergarten students really kind of take off at that time of the year, and they, you know, they round out their year learning to read usually, and that begins in March. And we, you know, February, March, whatever, the end of the year, you see a jump normally with kindergarten. And they went home March the 13th. So we just felt like we really needed that help in first grade, and thankfully, we've been able to do that with some of this Title One money. And that's been great because you have two people in that first grade room, and with these reduced numbers, that's, you know, five or six to one, or however many happen to be in that room. Some are a little bit more than that. The other thing that really helps when you're thinking about successful students is parent involvement, and that's what Title One also attempts to get us to improve. And we've tried to think about how to do parent involvement this year because, I think Ms. KJ said, we're just kind of staying above water and surviving, you know, because it's so odd and different day-to-day, and you don't know what's coming next. But parent involvement looks different this year because we can't have groups and invite them in and do all the things that we typically do. Usually, you know, we have a reading night, a math night, a science night, and it's a big blowout, and we have food, and we have fun, and we celebrate kids' accomplishments, kind of like the science thing that we did here today, the STEM rewards. We haven't been able to do that this year. Usually, we had academic celebrations also, and we haven't done that. So I have a new librarian this year and a new family resource person, and they teamed up, and this is the assignment I gave them, figure out how to, let's figure out how to get parents involved virtually, even though that's, there's an element of fatigue to that too, because we all know parents are working and then they're home trying to manage, you know, in the evening or whatever, they're trying to manage school as well. So it's a whole lot to ask for them to do anything else. It seems like a lot. But we've had several that have participated. So what they've done is come up with an activity every month that parents can participate in with their children, and they can share it to that PTO Facebook page. And for instance, in October, they decorated a pumpkin, and then the librarian had a Halloween-themed book checkout where you could come into the library in your costume, and she would give you a little Halloween candy, and you could check out a Halloween book. You know, we had several that did that, that wanted to wear that costume and really wanted to come to school and have everybody see them. And so we did some of that. In November, they asked that people find their favorite book that had a food theme or a recipe in it and make that recipe with their child. Well, you know, read the book and hold up the recipe and take your picture, that sort of thing. A 12-day reading challenge in December. In March, they're going to have a Russell County scavenger hunt that ends at JES. And in April, they're going to put together some, they have put together some summer activity packets for parents. So it looks different this year, like everything else. It looks different this year than it has in the past. Ms. Tanya asked us to talk just briefly about virtual learning and some positives and negatives. And I see some positives to virtual learning. I know that people tend to go directly to the negative, but we are really seeing an increase in all, everybody involved has increased in our knowledge of technology. Kids, parents, teachers, me, everybody has, our technology ability has grown. And that was one of the things I know, Mr. Ford, we had talked about at length when we learned that the end-of-the-year test was going to be online. We were all worried about the fact that some of these kids have not typed, and they don't know how to type, and they're very familiar with their program at this point. So I don't think that's as much of a concern, at least for me, as it was before we started all this. I think that's a positive. They've been forced to use it, and they're used to it and aren't as afraid of it as they might have been. I think it's also given parents a unique opportunity to see into the world of school, and I think that's a positive too, because if you sit with your children and you watch and you see what they're doing, I think you learn from that, and that's not a bad thing to know. We've seen, at Jamestown, I've been through all of the recent benchmark scores that we just did, and before the week off, I did some of that over the week, that we were all virtual for snow. It wasn't off, but out of school, not in person. And what we've seen is that students who joined live regularly and who completed assignments regularly have moved along. So, you know, we've seen some increases in their learning, and we've been pleased with that based on the benchmark scores. Now, that's not true of everybody because, you know, sometimes students have just completed assignments or, you know, maybe not joined and listened to the live. But the instruction has been strong. That's what I'm saying. And I think it's been good, and I'm proud of that. We use a system called PBIS Rewards, and we've used that to try to motivate students to join live and to get their assignments turned in. So we've done that. And I just have to say, I'm so proud of my teachers at JES. I think they've worked, just worked their heads off. They've worked so hard and gone above and beyond. And if you get in there and look at their Google Classrooms, they're beautiful, and they're way above and beyond what's required. They're engaging and nice and looks very professional. Lots of choices for students and just a really good thing. My only real concern with it is just that we have a handful of students who struggled to turn in work and to be involved virtually, and some of those students have chosen to remain, you know, some of those parents have chosen to remain virtual. So I'm concerned about that, and I'm not sure exactly how to address that other than to continue to try to work, you know, for those and with those. But hopefully, maybe our summer school program and maybe some of our Title One funding next year can help us with that, you know, when they come back. We had to focus on reading and math in our CSEB, and we have at Jamestown a social-emotional program that's ready and we're familiar with, and we've been trained in. And so when we get kids back in person, you know, we're working to try to help with those social needs also because that's a concern for all of us, I think, as adults and children. And we're not supposed to be as isolated as we have been for a year, and it's detrimental to emotional health, I think. So we have that program in place as well. So do you all have any questions, or did I go over my five minutes? I think that must have been a yes. She said that's okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say, you know, that I don't have to get the new one? Why am I saying that a whole lot shorter? Because you've heard a lot of it already, so I'll just give you the shortened version so much. A lot of it is so similar. And the principals, we were communicating, texting, I guess you want to say the best, just a couple of days ago, and we've all got very similar answers because we've all tried to navigate this world of unknown of education this year together the best that we know how. And so when you look at Title One and you look at parent involvement, you look at parent communication, it is completely changed from what we know. I mean, there has been no family fun walk. There's been no literacy night. There's been none of the things that we are so used to as a family and being together as family. And so we've had to improvise a lot of that. And when it comes to communication, that has been really tough. I think parents are enduring a long race, but I think they're tired. I think they're tired, just like we're all a little tired. And so phone calls become less effective. And I have to jump on board with Ms. Dine, and honestly, I get the most response from text messaging parents. I have to send it out there and just say, this is Ms. KJ, and your phone may go off at midnight for a parent that just says, I just got this. What do we need to do about after-school? You know, they have my cell phone number just like it's my home number. And, but that's the best way that I can get in to communicate with them. They work during the day. They're trying to help kids at night. Their kids are involved in other things at night. And so this year, more than any, we've had to rely on different ways of communication because we can't send home notes with kids because they're not at school. And so we are trying to reach out. We do put things in Google Street. We do try to announce things online. But we've had to become a little bit more creative, and I think social media, to some extent, we've had to kind of use that platform a little bit more, trying to get announcements out. But we really do try to communicate with our parents and kind of let them know where kids are and what they're doing. And kind of ties in a little bit, you know, when we look on down at our at-risk learners, I met with my teachers early on because it is so frustrating that they work, and we're trying to find time, how do we call this one, how do we call that one? And I'm very fortunate that I've had some help with that, that we make weekly phone calls, and it comes from the principal. And it's, on Friday, I get listed, and kids who are struggling are kids who are behind, and we kind of divide and conquer. Mr. Weston, myself, Ms. Melissa McGowan, she helps me. And we personally reach out to parents, hey, you're just missing one assignment. Saturday, we were on the phone for 30 minutes with a grandma. I had a Chromebook in front of me, just trying to walk them through that. And so we just have to be flexible and help parents and grandparents, outside guardians, the best that we know how. And so parent communication has been different. Parent involvement has been different. Just, you know, like Ms. Dine said, we're trying to find different ways. We're trying to do the at-home projects with them, you know. We've done a lot of those things, and the kids are sending in pictures, and we try to do them that way because that's the only way we have right now. And we have to understand that not all of our kids can participate in those things because they don't have that support at home. But we're putting it out there in hopes that they do. And our goal is that next year, it will look a lot different again. Maybe we'll be back, and we'll have parents back in our building, and we'll be able to do a lot of those things that we're so used to doing. Moving on from just parent communication, when we talk about our at-risk learners, I'm not going to really say anything different than Ms. Dine did. You know, we are working, after-school starts tomorrow, and we're working. It's, we're going to do it per-grade level, and we're going to be doing interventions. It's not after-school as we've known it before. It's not doing the extra activities. Right now, how can we support the kids that are there that need our help? Our RTI program is huge for us. It is, Ms. Penny Lester does a fabulous job with that, and they have been in and out of classrooms ever since the kids have been in there and on virtual days. Even our, I guess, our Title One Interventional Specialists that we have, which are a lot of younger adults for us, Ms. Mackenzie Rexer or Ms. Maggie Bell, they are on Google Meet Classrooms, one-on-one, working with kids. We're just trying to support them how we know how through our RTI program. And then, of course, in addition to that, we're very fortunate was to have the RTA grant that was sustained. I think I told Mr. Ford that earlier in the year. They granted us an additional year for that, and that particular position is filled by Ms. Jessica Goss, and she is a reading specialist. And so we have a Read to Achieve program that comes with its own intervention set, which we have really seen a lot of success with, something I didn't know existed out there. It's Fontis and Penel. And we're, this year, with our money, that we were awarded some extra, we have ordered that for some of our extra classrooms, just our K-12, and we're using that color code system. So we're hoping to see even more, of course, you have to have the kids in hand to do all of that, but the ones that are there, we're starting some of those new processes with. So after-school, the RTI programs, we're looking at all of those things that we can. Core content, PLCs look different. Like I said, everything looks different. But our teachers are meeting together, and I think one of the things that Ms. Tanya and Ms. Bethany and I've talked about, along with the other principals, is in preparation for next year, there's going to be, there's going to have to be a whole lot of curriculum and Title One alignment for next year. We're going to see those gaps, and we're going to figure out how to address them. And so I think there's going to be more focus on some of that this summer when we kind of know what school will look like for us next year. Virtual learning, that one, when I started looking at that, I started, just stories started coming to mind, and not negative stories, I have to say. There has been a lot of positive. I will not stand up here and say that when we told teachers that we were training them on Google Classrooms, and I think sometimes when they sat through Chris Goffby's trainings, they would look at me like with the big wide eyes, like, how in the world are we going to do this? And I get on those classrooms now and watch their lessons, and it's amazing what they've learned in just this amount of year. The other day, Mr. Bethany got me on and had me in breakout rooms with my, and I had fourth graders teaching me how to do different, we were all in breakout sessions. And it was really neat to see the kids interact that way. There's just been lots of different examples that I could go on with. But the teachers have embraced it. It has been a huge challenge, but like Ms. Dine said, they have stepped up and really worked hard at that. But when you look at virtual learning, it looks so different for all families, myself included, you know, as a working parent trying to figure out how to balance that. But in particular, we have this one student who, at the beginning of the year, the guardian just said, I don't know how we're going to do this, Ms. KJ. We can't do it. We can't do it. And was very close to the school, and every day, we were in the four-year mask up. Let me show you. Let's, I mean, literally, every day, come for the lunch line, he'd hand me the iPad out the window. He'd hand me the Chromebook. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. He's now choosing to keep his child virtually. And I say that because you don't turn on that classroom where you don't see two faces. It's not just the student. He's right there with you. And it's been a growing experience for both of them. And when I called and gave them the option to come back, he didn't want to come back in person. them the option to come back, he didn't want to come back in person. And I feel like part of that is that relationship's been strengthened and he's learning along with him. And when I say you see two faces on the camera, I promise you, you see two faces. I mean, they are right there. And it was amazing. Ms. Sandy Stern, she might kill me if she knew I said it, but she had a little face off. They were doing some multiplication today. And the grandparents were facing off against each other because they were all in there on the lessons. And I will, you know, Ms. Sandy, I mean, I don't know who's going to win this contest, but we were cheering those grandparents on. But it's brought a different dynamic for some of those parents who didn't get to see what they were really getting to learn. Now, that's not to say that it's all, you know, great. There are challenges that are still out there. But it has allowed parents and grandparents to see a different side of it and allow them to be a part of that. And so, there has been a lot of positives to the virtual learning. As far as the things that we look at that are negative, it's no different than what is want to be said and what has said. We do struggle with getting some kids online. We do struggle with getting some assignments completed. You do struggle with just trying to, every week, make that contact. What can we do? How can we help? Let's get that going. But that's going to happen. There's going to be kids when they come to school that aren't always going to perform. So, it's just a battle with, you know, that you're just going to, you have to kind of navigate your way around it. I guess to kind of finish up on mine, the last thing that Ms. Tanya wanted us to kind of look at was our areas of improvement and areas of strength according to our CSET. And we left our CSET basically the same this year because it is based on test data and we didn't have any from last year. And so, nothing has changed as far as that. We still want to see our kids improve. We're looking at all subject areas to reduce novice learners, to reduce our, you know, goals, to shorten those gaps. Will we meet all that this year? I don't know. It's been a tough setting. But I can say, through the staff that we've had, through the Title I support that we've had, through everything we've done, we've tried. We've given our best. We've seen some kids blossom in virtual learning. We've seen kids become leaders behind a computer screen because sometimes that's easier than in the classroom. And I speak to that when I say my old daughter. She's not one, believe it or not. It's not like me. She is sometimes at a loss for words and doesn't like to be up in front of a class. But behind a computer screen, there's a little bit of comfort there. And she will engage in things that she might not normally have done in the classroom. And so, I think there's been some positives. There's going to be a little give and take. And so, Title I for us has always been a huge support as far as intervention and parent involvement is concerned. And that's something that we just hope to capitalize on, continue next year. But I'll answer any questions that you have.
At Russell Springs Elementary, a lot of the things that I'm going to say is a lot what you've heard already from Ms. Diane and Ms. KJ. But Ms. Tanya had sent us some things that she wanted us to just address. And so, I've just kind of made some bullets here of some things. And I'm going to start her out with virtual learning and the positives about that. One of the positives that we see is that students can work at their own pace and their own schedule, which I think is a good thing because, you know, if they can't be online, those lessons are recorded there for the afternoon. Or if they've watched live, they can go back if they've missed something and look at those recordings and be able to stop and listen again. And hopefully, that helps them with their lessons. Another positive is when students are participating, they are learning and making progress. And I see that, especially with my old grandkids. They are learning. Houston's in kindergarten. He's reading, adding and subtracting. So, it's just been great. And, you know, we can see that. Teachers have been conducting individual and small group sessions to enhance skills and learning. And I think that's a big positive. They see the needs of those students and they pull them in in small groups, you know, virtually. And they work one-on-one with them virtually. And I think that connects the students with the teachers, even though they're not in class, to be able to do that. And then, like Ms. Diane said, students are learning technology skills that they wouldn't have learned otherwise. And I think that's a great thing because when they go on to middle school, high school, and even college or tech schools, they're going to be even that much further ahead because they have those skills already in place that they've learned in elementary school through the technology that they're having to do, as well as their teachers, you know, all of us. We're all learning. It's been crazy, but we're all learning. And that's been a positive thing. Now, some negatives that we see in virtual learning is not all students are logging on and some parents are doing work for them, which, you know, I think parents think they're helping, but it's really hindering. And, you know, the students aren't learning. Students are continuing to submit assignments blank or with very little effort. We see a lot of mental and emotional health of the students more at risk with this virtual learning. You know, they're just not getting that interaction. I'm going to take this off. They're not getting that interaction, peer interaction or student-teacher interaction face-to-face. And I think that's a negative there. And then, we, you know, Ms. Janie, Ms. Amy and I, we live to see those kids every day the way it was last year. And we just don't get that. And that's tough. That's tough on us because, you know, we want to develop those relationships and those interactions with the kids. And a sad thing is that I don't know a lot of the kindergarten students that are at Russell Springs Elementary School. And that breaks my heart because, you know, we love these kids and we want that interaction with them. And, you know, we will hear names, but we can't put a face to that name because we haven't seen them. And that's tough. That's tough on us because we are some students' safe haven. And I just wish that we had them more at school so that we could see them, lay eyes on them, know that they're okay, know that they've got a place to come, that they're loved, and that they are cared for, and that they're just going to do well at Russell Springs and all the schools. So, that goes with virtual learning. The CSET, the targeted areas of improvement, of course, science is one area that we are targeting for improvement. And we purchased a new science curriculum last year that we are really getting to implement this year in second, third, and fourth grades. So, we're hoping to see that continued progression of learning there. And then, we have Ms. Marcy with us a couple of days a week. And I think the kids are enjoying the STEM activities that she was doing with the kids virtually and the kiddos that are at school. So, I appreciate that with her. Math is another area that we are targeting for improvement. And we use Khan Academy. Teachers are also using Eureka Math and then Extra Math and MathWiz. So, we're doing what we can, hopefully, to try to improve those math skills and reading skills. So, as they progress in the grade levels, they're going to hopefully improve on that. Some strengths, of course, we have Ms. Jessie Hopper, who is our RTI intervention teacher. She does a fabulous job. She's assisted by two highly qualified retired teachers, Ms. Peggy Johnson, Ms. Kim Williams. And they are amazing. They've even gotten their large virtual Google Classrooms. They have some individual groups that they work with. So, you know, I think that's a big positive, too. They just jumped right in and didn't care a bit to learn. Now, they had to work a little bit on it, but they got it. So, it was really, really good. Our RTI interventionist and our daytime waiver teachers that comes through Title I, they are focusing on math and reading interventions and to support the regular classroom instruction, which will in turn help those teachers as well. And then, we have three highly qualified retired teachers that are funded through Title I, who work with low-performing students in first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grades. And that is Ms. Mitzi Stevens, Ms. Kathy Stevens, and, well, I'm blank. Ms. Kim Williams and Ms. Peggy. Oh, Ms. Linda Hughes, yes. And so, they are helping. It's really good to see them back in the classroom, doing what they do best. And they have also been doing Google Classroom and having small groups with some of the RTI students. A good strength, I think, is their K-1 and 2 benchmarking math averages have increased from 17.6 to 19, which, you know, that seems like a small jump, but in the virtual world, I think that's a big positive and a big strength. And then, also, we have less behaviors. You know, we don't have to deal with that. So, that's been a good thing. Our at-risk learners, our teachers are jumping in there and, you know, based on benchmarking. And they're, I guess, they're small groups that they do. They see students that are at risk and need that extra attention. And they are having individual or small group sessions for those students. Many at-risk students have been identified for our after-school program, which will begin tomorrow. And like Ms. KJ said, we are focusing on math and reading. And I think it's going to be a very good positive for us. And I think parents are going to be very appreciative of that. Every parent that we contacted was like really glad, you know, but even the ones that are virtual, they are getting their students there. We're taking them home, but they will get them there. So, I think that's a big positive. And then, our EL students that have the opportunity to attend four days a week, I think that's really good. Then we have the online programs such as Lexia, Reading Plus, and Khan Academy that allow students to learn at their individual levels and live at their own pace. And these programs can be accessed at home. So, I think that helps students as well. As far as parent notification, our teachers keep in touch with parents through the Remind app and Dojo, which I think has been really, really good. Now that, you know, we've always used Remind a lot, but now that parents are realizing that that's what their big form of communication is, so they're jumping on board with that. Of course, teachers are always available through email, phone contacts during their planning times. Then we use, we utilize our PTO Facebook page and we send home monthly newsletters. And then, we do emails as well. Also, the parents have access to Parent Portal on infinite campus where they can keep up with their students' grades. And progress reports go home every three weeks and grade cards every nine weeks as before. And anytime that we have students that we're really concerned about, teachers let us give us those names. Ms. Janie, Ms. Amy and I, Mr. Gordon, as well as the teachers, we first contact them through Remind or Dojo. And then, we make phone calls. And then, finally, we do home visits until we are somewhat successful in reaching the parents or guardians. And Ms. Janie has really diligently been a home visit person this year. She has stood on many porches and knocked on many doors. And she's been very, very helpful as far as that goes in reaching out to parents and helping them with, you know, she'll go out and help them with Chromebooks or help them get online for some reason if they can't get online. And so, that's been a really big positive there that we've had. Parent involvement, of course, like Ms. KJ, Ms. Diane said, it's been different this year. There's a lot of things that we are limited to do. But we did a fall book fair and we're actually right now in the midst of a spring book fair that's virtual. And we were pretty successful with that, not near to what with the extent we were last year in person. But kids are getting on and learning. Ms. Lindsay, our librarian, she also did a fall or a virtual book checkout. And the kids could get online and they could pick out the books they wanted. And she would get those together, just like the ClickList at Kroger. And she would put them out and kids could come and pick them up. So, I think that's been really, really good. We've asked parents to submit pictures of their learning environment with the students. And we want to use those in our yearbook this year that, because, you know, this is going to be a year like no other. So, this will be great for kids to be able to look back on in 20 years or next year, hopefully, and look back and remember when we had to do that, you know. Also, we've asked them, after this storm, we asked them to send in pictures of them playing outside. And they posted some pictures on Facebook and we're going to use those in our yearbook as well. Because some of our kids had never even got to plug in Snow, you know, just hadn't happened. Through our parent involvement money, we purchased some Reading Connection newsletters that offer tips for reading, math, and science. It gives parents ideas to help promote that learning at home. And of course, we're always looking for ways to increase parent involvement in our school. And our PTO has actually done some brainstorming to offer incentives to get parents more involved. But like Ms. KJ said, you know, they're overwhelmed already now anyways. And, you know, I think if they're just a smidge involved, I think that's success. Our core academic alignment, of course, our teachers meet, grade-level PLCs and as well as the content PLCs to align our curriculum horizontally and vertically. We do a lot of faculty meetings virtually. And, you know, I want to keep my teachers informed. And we talk about things that are good and bad. And we Zoom with the teachers, talking about students that teachers are concerned with. So, you know, that has been a positive. Some additional info from our school, of course, we brought students in for targeted services back before we ever began hybrid, which I think was a positive, get some kids in there that were really falling behind or having trouble. We have completed our benchmarking for K through 2. So, we've got all of that completed. And then, a fun thing is through a grant that Ms. Lindsay Williams, our librarian, did, she purchased a bearded dragon for our school. He is, or she, we thought it was a he, but he was Mo, but now he's Malana. She's Moana. But she's our library lizard. And the kids love her. And they are so excited. And Ms. Lindsay does a fabulous job. She's, of course, researched everything about bearded dragons and she's teaching the kids about that. And so, that's been a fun thing. In my Read Across America, Mo sat on my shoulder while I read my book. So, he, she, you know, I never thought I would be petting a lizard, but she has a personality. I mean, it's just crazy, you know, her little personality. But, so, if you're ever at Russell Springs Elementary and you want to come in and pet a lizard, then Ms. Lindsay would be delighted for you to do that.
I'm a pug.
In closing, I just want to say, I am so extremely proud of my teachers. They have just gone above and beyond. They have jumped in there and done something that they've never had to do before. They're teaching in ways that they never thought that they would even have to teach before. They truly care about the kids. And it shows because they are concerned when they're not turning in their assignments. And they, you know, they've just done a fabulous job. And our assistants, you know, our kindergarten assistants, our special ed assistants, they have small groups. They're doing Google Classrooms. And I just think that that just shows that as a school family, we are all working together because it does take us all to help to get these kids through this year and to make progress the best that we can. Is that all for you? Do y'all have any questions for me?
You go very good.
Thank you.
All of you doing very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams is back.
Okay, Mr. Ackerman cannot be here tonight. So, I am filling in in his place. So, just kind of going through some of the same things. Middle school is a little bit different than elementary. It's kind of a different world, especially when it comes to parent involvement. When they get to us, parents are kind of taking a little bit of a backseat compared to what they've been doing when they were in elementary school. And that's just the nature of the age. So, but several things that we do, school messenger, one calls, lots of those to keep them up to date, Reminds, teachers send Reminds often, Facebook and Facebook and Instagram, Ms. Sarah Stafford, our librarian, she is on it when it comes to social media. She's posting daily, just to try to keep everybody in the know. We send letters for academics and anything else that's going on, any important events. And then this year, our new way of communicating is like the other principals said, through text messaging. That seems to be most effective. And I think it's just because parents can correspond with us at a time that's convenient for them and not feel like they have to step outside of work to answer the phone or those sorts of things. So we do get text messages late at night, but that's just kind of the nature of what we're going through. So aligning core academic subjects. Teachers, our teachers meet weekly in PLCs to create plans to reach students. They meet in grade-level and content groups to determine what level of understanding students are getting and what we need to do to go forward. They are sharing each week specific strategies that they're using on this virtual platform, what's working well for each of them, so that other teachers are able to try those things and to be more effective in their classrooms. Specific activities for at-risk learners during the time that we were strictly virtual, we hadn't really started any in-person learning yet. We were bringing in students for that RTI purpose trying to catch them up and just to help them. And we had large numbers of students that were coming in every single day in hour-to-two-hour slots so that we could help them one-on-one with certified teachers as well as classified assistants, principals were sitting down with students helping them, so lots of different opportunities for that. We have actually, at the middle school, started our after-school program. Elementary schools are getting ready to start. We have started. So far, it's been really good for us. We have approximately sixty-five to seventy kids who are signed up for after-school. And those are all targeted students who need focus on ELA. We are strictly focusing on ELA right now with our after-school program. And then we will turn our focus to math, and we'll pull in those students into after-school that need extra help in math. So right now, we're doing ELA. So far, it's been great. Parents have been super supportive. They are excited to get their kids that extra help. It's gone really, really well. Some situations, this was kinda hit on earlier, we are allowing students to come those four days, all four days. And the EL students, I think, benefit greatly from that. They need as much support as they can get right now. Virtually, it's very difficult for those students, so we are thankful for that. We also have some of our special needs students that are coming four days a week, and that's crucial for them as well. So that's been really good. As far as parent involvement, again, that looks totally different. And we're looking at that different on area. We have created lots of videos that we have sent out in every method that we know how to parents. When we want to share something, Mr. Ackerman will create a video just to explain things, so it's a little more personal. And Mr. Ackerman, actually, the three principals take on a grade. So Mr. Ackerman kinda takes over eighth grade, I was seventh grade, and then Ms. Triggers was sixth grade. So teachers know exactly who to go to when it's regarding a student and the help that they need. And then we are in constant contact with those parents, so that helps with that parent involvement. Those parents are knowing who's gonna be calling them, who they can check in with. So I feel like that's been a real positive for us. And we actually, the three principals, send videos to these parents, helping them, offering advice, tutorials, all kinds of stuff. We're just in constant contact with them. We really feel like that our parent contacts have grown exponentially this year, which for us is a positive. We just have parents are contacting us, teachers are contacting parents. It's daily. It's multiple times a day through phone calls, text messages, virtually, what have you. We are just in constant contact. We feel like that's been really good for us. And virtual learning, we also feel like has led parents to a more direct access to their teachers. So many of our teachers, I would say probably one hundred percent of our teachers honestly have given out their personal cellphone number. And I think that just speaks volumes for our teachers, that they are willing to do that and provide that in order to help parents. And that, I know, is building relationships with parents and teachers as well and strengthening that. So some things that, for more parent involvement, obviously, we'd love to be able to open our doors to parents and get them in there. But obviously, we just can't do that right now. So just providing them more support with Google Classroom and helping their students and being able to do that is big for us. I've already kinda hit on this a little bit, but virtual learning. Some of the students and some of the other principals sent this, too, are truly thriving in the virtual world, the virtual environment. It, you know, they're just doing outstanding. Some of them are even doing better than they would if we were in person. The biggest negative we see, our students are not able to interact socially. And middle school, that's a big thing. It's a big thing in all grades, but middle school, it's just a big time for that as well. So I will say our teachers are, all of them, are doing a really good job using breakout rooms so they can put those students together in small groups and allowing conversation to happen with those students and then with the teachers as well. So they are doing the best that they possibly can, but that's a big struggle that I guess I worry about. Is our students are just behind socially. And I just think that's hard. But overall, I think our teachers are working so closely with other teachers. They're collaborating so well, doing all that they can to meet the needs of the students however they can. So I feel like our teachers have grown tremendously. Our students have grown tremendously. We all have. And it's just, it's really been a neat experience to be a part of. Our targeted area of improvement is our achievement gap. Our focus area is on special education students. So we work really hard. Our regular education students and our special education teachers work very hard on targeting specific students, naming and claiming them. What does this student specifically need, and how can we meet that in order to help them? We are bringing in special education students, even if they are virtual, to help them in the afternoons and get what they need. We've been meeting with students one-on-one, making appointments for them throughout the day just to be able to get what they need from those teachers. Our area of strength, we are continuing to grow in math and reading. We have worked super hard in these areas over the past few years. But we've truly put our time and focus into those areas and implementing specific strategies for each student. And again, that naming and claiming, and each principal with that grade level works with teachers very closely on weekly updates on these students that we name and claim and what's going well for them, or what do we need to do to help continue their progress. So that's working really well for us. We have several new teachers at RCMS this year that we're really excited to have, and they have just really hit the ground running and have offered so many ideas and things to us, and we're excited to have them. And this year has been a challenge, but it's also been such a good experience, I feel like, so. That's all there is.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
I think you all know full well I am not an administrator or a principal, so I am a messenger this evening. A lot of what has been said is true across all grade levels. So I think we're experiencing a lot of the same challenges and the same successes, so I don't wanna get too repetitive on you. Teachers, principals, and school personnel have been pretty creative, just like everybody else, in devising tactics to communicate. I think the first day of our new semester as high school, we changed classes. I had a DM on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, emails, and text messages and phone calls all going at the same time. So Mr. Ford, if you saw any usage of the internet, of social media going on at school, I was not taking a selfie or anything like that. It was literally communicating with parents and students the best way you know how, which is how they can get hold of you. Can they search you somewhere, find you, and shoot you a message? So we have been very creative. Our librarian, Ms. Stephanie McGowan, has a great eye for visuals. So she creates on Facebook and Instagram some really catchy posts that students read. Ms. Rickson has been awesome with Remind, and she's created an email distribution list for every grade level. And then for the entire school, that includes parents, it includes students, and she can send out things to various groups as a whole, to grade levels as a whole, to parents, to students. And so that has been something that we shoot her, what needs to be sent out, she sends it. That way, it's a number they recognize, and they're not getting information from tons of places, just one place that they then have signed up for those messages. So actually, just this afternoon, I made a video about the ACT, and you have to know that I love kids to make videos because I hate my boys and I hate seeing myself on camera. So those are things that we will have to kinda just do whether or not we're comfortable with it at this point. We definitely use some Title I funds to send out more resources in the mail to students than we usually do. Like they said, you can't hand things out, you can't pass a note to a kid to take home. So that has been also where some of that money has gone. Our students being virtual on Wednesdays has had a really big advantage in teachers being able to schedule one-on-one Google meets either during their planning, during what we call office hours for our high school teachers. There's a couple of spaces in the day when they have moments to do that. In addition, that is when they also meet in departments. We tend to meet more in department than grade level with high school, just because that tends to be the most common people that you need to communicate with to align everything. We have also been able, luckily, to bring in, it's hard at the high school level sometimes to get students to come in person on those Wednesdays, but the transportation folks and Mr. Darnell, we've created like a Google sheet where everybody puts in the information. That gets sent to the bus garage, and it's something that is very streamlined to be able to allow students to come to school and get help. So small groups and individual learning have taken place. Obviously, Google Meet, Zoom, face-to-face instruction. Our teachers have really gone above and beyond attempting to contact parents over and over and over again to make sure that we meet the needs of the students. Reading Plus and No Reading are a couple of programs that our students have been able to use virtually to help them, particularly in English, which we know English and math have kind of been the focus of all these different schools. This year, I think that definitely more parent phone calls and contacts have been made than ever before. And I think that that's a good thing. We really do wanna continue to build those genuine relationships. And even though it's a bad situation that we had to do it this way, it has, I think, hopefully, made parents more likely to call us and maybe a little more comfortable speaking to some of us at school. Also, another, I guess you'd call it a program, we have our Laker Success Academy where we try to reach our at-risk students, where we try to prevent dropout. And it serves a lot of students. And I've just, Ms. Damer and I have just in the last couple of days gotten some emails about students who have caught up on credits or who are going to actually be ready to graduate who we thought wouldn't have been. And it's one of those times where you get teary every time you read one of those emails and you see a little face in your head that you haven't seen in person for a while, and you just, you wanna give them a hug, and you know you can, but you just, in your head, do a little dance, a little cheer for those kiddos. Obviously, we are not where we want to be, and as they mentioned with the CSET, we don't have a lot of data to change what our CSET will be, but just to kind of continue going and try to basically be better than we were the year before. We know that not all students are successful in virtual learning, but we are attempting to do our best that we can to make it good out of a bad situation. And just as a kid, I have to say, Ms. Marcy is awesome. Her STEM classes are so cool. And my kids are loving, London is an animal freak, so she is always talking about what's going on in that classroom. All of the teachers, and I know all the schools have been awesome, but my second grader knows how to write an email. And I don't think I wrote an email until I was in high school, probably, maybe college, I don't know. But I'm just really impressed with how above and beyond all of the kids, my kids personally, their teachers have gone, as well as the teachers at the high school, just how much they care and love our kiddos. And just lastly, I know with high school age, they, I think they seem like they can be tough, but let me tell you, we had a class officer meeting the other day, and there is no group of kids I would rather be with than high school kids. They are amazing and they are creative. And I just, it was so nice to be in a room with them and get to talk to them. So I look forward to hopefully having more of that because it was just a good lift in my spirits to actually see kids in person and get to sit around a table and chat with them. So thank you all so much.
Mr. Ford, could I add one other thing?
Yes.
We have all collectively forgotten to thank somebody without whom the Title I program would not successfully operate, and that's our coordinator, Miss Bridgette.
Thank you.
Anytime we call her, the best way she can do to help us. So we appreciate all that you do also.
Very well said. Did you have anything else to add this time?
What?
Okay.
Knocking it out.
Personnel reports. Darren Poston hired Wisconsin High School assistant tennis coach. Tiffany Skeens is hired as our new real teacher. We're very excited to bring her on. She's been teaching Spanish for a number of years, so she's valuable. And we're so excited that opportunity for our students, and she's gonna start with us on March the 1st. And Josh Bunce resigned as an instructional assistant. And that's it. Until Ms. Brenda Axon, number 17.
I might as well be a jerk.
Who's second?